Good evening, everyone. Nora, you ready?
You're on record.
Okay. Good evening. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes, here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty, here?
No.
Uh, Mr. Willins?
Here.
Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some... Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chadwick, raise your hand, please. Do you swear upon the head and testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lannigan, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Just some internal business before we get to the general public comments. We need nomination for Chair for the Board.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Kaplan.
Second.
Thank you. So we have to do a roll call. Are all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Sure, why not? Uh, thank you, Board. I appreciate it. I know I have really big shoes to fill. I'll do the best I can and have patience with the learning curve, please. So with me now being the Chair, that opens up my Chair position. I'd like to nominate Mr. Mazzarella.
Second.
Nora?
Hold on. Do you want to... Is there any other nominations?
Oh, I guess I should do that. Any other nominations? Okay.
A roll call. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Sure, yes.
Oh, maybe. Willins.
I'll think of it.
Kaplan, Willins.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, good.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Mazzarella.
Both of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Okay, at this time, is there any business to come before the Board that is not on tonight's agenda? No hands? I thought I saw some hands. They're just waving? Okay. Close that portion. We have some resolutions to approve.
Before we get to the resolution?
Correspondents?
Yes.
We have one correspondence from the McDonald's Real Estate Company for the... Their application that was supposed to be heard tonight, they are requesting an extension to September 25. And they are willing to grant extensions through November 11.
Without further notice?
They have to notice.
They have to notice again?
Yeah, they never notice.
Yeah, okay.
Ah, okay. All those in favor? Well, let me ask. Is the 25th good?
Yes.
Okay.
I already gave them the date.
I figured. Okay, so that's table resolutions. We're gonna do three different motions. Application 2358, which was AD Hawkins F for the carport. We can have Berkowitz, Grignani, Joskowitz, Petty's not here, Ready, yeah, not here, uh, Willins, and Kaplan. Someone make a motion?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do roll call? Sorry.
No. No, thank you.
Do we have to do roll call?
Yeah.
No? All right, great. All right, uh, then... In fact, we normally do.
Do we do it normally?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Should've stepped up.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Ready. Oh, he's not here. Willins.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
All right, so now we're gonna do 2402, 2412, and 2360, which is Berkowitz, Grignani, Joskowitz, Mazzarella, Petty, Ready, and Kaplan.
So moved.
Second, Berkowitz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. And the last one is an approval of denial for 2359, um, which was the appeal of the administrative officer's decision. That will be Berkowitz, Grignani, Joskowitz, Mazzarella, Petty, Ready, and Kaplan.
So moved. Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
There is one more on a second page.
Second.
Oh, it's a state. And there's letter D. Thank you, Nora. Um, application 2302, which was perfect clicks. Uh, this one will be Berkowitz, Grignani, Mazzarella, Petty, Ready, and not me.
So move, Berkowitz.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Okay, good for that. And I believe we are ready to get into the agenda. We'll call up application 2407, Suk and David Hung. I hope I said that correctly.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Okay, can you both raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you each state your name and spell your last names, please?
Okay, my name is Suk Wen Hung. Last name is H-U-N-G.
Sir.
H-U-N-G.
Great, thank you. You can be seated.
Okay, thanks.
All right, please speak into the microphones. Um, you are here because you are looking to construct a 200-square-foot shed, which apparently is two sheds combined. Um, and you need some setbacks. You've got the building coverage issue, though that is really small, and an impervious coverage issue, um, which is not. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing, describe the shed for us, and tell us why you need it?
I'm gonna be too close to the top.
Understood.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, just pull the mic closer.
Thank you.
You can pull it out.
We moved in town almost two years ago from East Hanover, obviously from a bigger home, and now to, like, less than half the size. So we, we feel that we needed to have a shed, and the only space that we have available is that there is an empty lawn, which is right in front of our driveway. And, um, I have to admit that I did Google online, and for some reason, Google gave me the information. Anything less than 200 square feet, we do not need to apply through the township. That was the information I got, which I realized afterwards that is really wrong. So, um, next thing I know is we have someone from the township, obviously someone in the neighborhood have reported us, and, um, that's when we realized that we shouldn't have the shed built six feet, um, you know, into our property line. But it was already done. It was only three feet instead of six feet. And that was the reason why we need to apply for a variance, and that's why we're here.
Is the shed already built?
It is, yes.
The 200-foot applies to getting a building permit, not a zoning permit. That's, that's where the error, that's where the error came from.
We need to have a permit, but we didn't, we didn't know.
Did you have this built on site?
I'm sorry?
Did you have this built on site, or is this a...
No.
Sheds that were brought to your property and just placed in the ground?
Well, we, we bought, uh, we bought the shed from, um, way, way there, and it has to be built, so I just asked my landscaper to build it.
It came in parts?
It came in parts.
It was like assembled some?
It, it was metal, yes.
Is it on a foundation?
Uh, it does have a founda... Well, it does have a foundation. My, uh, our landscaper actually have leveled the ground, and, um, you know, it's, it's all on a flat ground, on, on a gravel. Um, and also it does have a foundation. Um, you know, we, we had some very heavy rains, and we didn't have any problem with the shed.
When you say foundation, you mean it's crushed stone is its foundation, or is there cement blocks or something of that order?
It is cement, yes, because our landscaper put the cement in, and then the metal shed would fill on top of it.
So there's a, a, a platform of concrete that it sits on?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how thick that is?
Um, it's...
I mean, a couple inches of foot?
It's actually, uh, it, it's actually eight, eight feet extended out of the shed. So we do have a little bit of room on the side, yes.
Were you, were you asking how deep? How thick, John?
Yeah.
How thick? And how wide? How thick on the...
How thick is the...
Concrete on the ground.
If you don't know, you don't know.
I know he put concrete on top of it.
You know, don't...
I, I'm not, I'm not an expert in that area. I can't give you a correct answer.
So there's concrete?
Yes.
Between the stone and the building?
Yeah.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking all these questions is, I mean, it would seem to me logically it would be right at the end of the driveway, and then you would've had no variances, and then you would've got a zoning permit for it. Why did you put it in the back? Instead of right apex of the driveway, where you'd have a hard surface to go right into it?
Well, at the time, we just thought that it, it looks, it looks good right in the middle of it, so right now it's sitting in the middle of it. I did look into it today, where the foundation was built. It actually had three feet in front of the shed.
Good, good, good.
So, um, I don't know whether this is something that could be acceptable.
Well, it looks like there's three feet between the shed and your property line.
From the back, yes.
Yeah.
There is three feet.
So what, what other three feet are you talking about?
I'm talking about the foundation that we had built.
Oh, 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 okay. Yes, yeah.
What's in, what's in the back property line? Is there a fence?
Just wood, just trees.
Just trees?
We're not in anybody's way. There's rocks. It's where Rainbow Lake is. There's a lot of rocks. There's a lot of trees. Um, before we even build the shed, I actually have asked my neighbor behind us, I think that was number 44 Civic Drive. Um, he was very, very sweet. He told me where our property line is. It was marked in orange, so we knew exactly where we at.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, we did it three feet. Yeah.
And you've had, your neighbors have had no water issue with runoff from your property onto theirs?
None whatsoever, especially this past month. We had a lot of water.
And nothing?
Yes.
How, how long has it been up there?
Um, I would say about two months, yes, just recently.
So who filed the complaint? Why are you here?
We, I'd like to find out who it is. Because, you know, I asked all of my neighbors around me.
They think so.
Everybody says it wasn't me.
They're not gonna hear you.
So I have no clue. I don't know.
We didn't block anybody.
Not in anybody's way, you know?
And then, is, it's all wooded behind you there?
It's all woods, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you know why, hey, John, do you know why this is called out here? The yards are open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Okay.
We got the three-feet foot issue, the yards and open decks is nothing, the building coverage is nothing, and then the impervious coverage is... Yeah.
Minimis.
Any other questions from the Board?
No.
Does anyone from the public wish to ask questions of the witnesses, of the applicants? Okay. Um, anyone from the public wish to speak for this application or against this application? What ones come up? All right, I, uh, I don't think we need to go into conference on this one, so someone willing to make a statement?
Yeah, to me, it seems minimis in nature. Uh, the three feet back, you're not on anybody's, above anybody's property, and, uh, I'll be voting for it.
All right. You wanna finish up with the resolution?
Sure. Application 24:07, Suk and David Hung, 71 Clearview Road, Lot 125, Zone 3, uh, Lot 3, Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct the shed contrary to Sections 430-10(c), Section 430-10i, and Section 430-35, Columns 10 and 13.
Motion?
Second.
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 All right. Um, Nora?
Hold on. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready. Willins.
Yes.
Um, oh, I already said Kaplan. Yep. Everyone.
It is approved, and I believe we will, um, vote on the resolution in two weeks, and then you're free to... You can't use the shed until, until... All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for your understanding.
So you're gonna be a funny chairman, is that what we're trying to say?
Hopefully. Start booing me. Um, okay, application 2415, Martin Wan, 22 Lawrence Road. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To the rest of the Board and the professionals and the public, um, we are here, as was stated, on Martin Wan's application for 22 Lawrence Road. My name is Ben Lindeman from the law firm, Portzo Bronberg and Newman in Morristown. Um, I'm here on behalf of my fine, Martin Wan, and his family, who is also in attendance, um, seeking to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling on a lot where a house previously or will currently exist that they would like to tear down. Um, as you'll hear from the applicant, presently on the site is a, is a home that's in disrepair, and, um, the applicant hopes to be able to construct a new home, which will be up to modern standards, that he and his family can move into the community, um, shortly. Uh, as part of this application, applicant seeks approval for the following variances: Lot area, lot width, front yard, um, those are existing and conforming, accessory side yard setback, building coverage, open deck coverage, and impervious coverage. Beyond hearing from the applicant, you will also hear testimony on behalf of the applicant by our engineer and architect, um, explaining how and why the variances are required for construction to meet the requirements of Prescyptine Troy Hills ordinances in the municipal land use law. If I may?
Yes, good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Martin, welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and the project?
Sure. So, um, my name is Martin. Um, I recently just bought, uh, bought this 22 Lawrence Road a couple months back, and, um, my initial heart and, um, was that, hey, this is a town where my daughter and soon-to-be, my second daughter, coming soon in September, um, a place for my family to grow and, and we can move into. And, um, we were very lucky to come across this one address on 22 Lawrence, and, um, the price was just right for us to, to purchase it, and, um, since then, uh, I, I know the previous owners, they had the, the house for quite some time, and, um, it was definitely in need of, of repair and just the remodel of the, of the, of the, of the property, and I felt, um, at the time, uh, anything worth, um, purchasing and, and just kind of investing my time and effort into would be worth it for my family and for our, for our future, so, um, and so that's where, um, I've come here today to basically, um, kind of share my heart. I, I do want to come here and, and live with you guys and, um, you know, see my family grow up in the, in the community, and I'm seeking for a couple, um, variances here so that, you know, my, our family can, just, it, it will grow along with the, my, my growing family, so...
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? We're putting our architect up.
This is a letter from the Township Engineers Office that details the stormwater issues on this site. Have you had a chance to meet with the, the Township Engineer?
Uh, we have not met with the Township Engineer. We received the letter yesterday, but, um, our engineer hopefully will provide testimony that will, um, satisfy the Township Engineer, and if not, um, we can discuss that.
Generally, we try to come to some resolution, not spend a lot of time discussing and talking with your engineer, while we don't know whether it's going to meet the Township standards.
Mm-hmm.
And probably the most productive thing could occur, who agrees, is meet with the Township Engineer, see if there's a resolution to his issues. The only thing I could see that could be productive from continuing this hearing this moment is to have, if there are people in the audience interested in this case, speak as to what the issues are, not making complaints, but speak to what they believe the issues are, because when you meet with the Township Engineer, you'll have a background of what issues you have to deal with as well as the engineer.
I understand.
I try and, you know, be, you, you get everybody's time as productive as possible, and, and I can see that this might go on for quite some time and get no resolve if we could just kind of narrow it out a little bit, and then you would ask to postpone to a firm date, and hopefully you can come back with the answers, because we're not gonna know the answers.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I, my only...
I understand what your engineer, engineer is gonna, gonna do, but it sounds like it's more, it's more complicated than that, so...
Oh, here.
Did you have a chance to look at the report? You got it yesterday, but you looked at it?
Yes.
So preliminarily, preliminarily speaking, is there, do you have any objections to anything that's... I know you wanted you to speak to them, but in looking at that, was there anything you were objected to off the top?
Um, I didn't see anything, and my engineer, I don't believe, saw anything that would be objectionable. It was more, um, you know, team guidance towards how, how we should proceed in the future and to make sure that we, um, you know, everything would comply with, you know, Prescyptine Troy Hills ordinances and, and what the engineer had, had said, and I would, you know, if you'd like to hear from our engineer, that would be great, and he could, you know, posit his opinion on, on, you know, how they, how they plan on, you know, making this project.
Well, we're, we're not going to approve anything without the Township Engineer's blessing, and it seems like, hey, I mean, this is probably the lengthiest runoff report I've seen, um, and it's the first time I've seen him write one, write that it's gonna be costly.
Yeah.
So I, I agree that I think the first step is to have you guys get on the same page with the engineer, have him write a letter saying you've satisfied his requirements and that you guys are willing to do that at whatever expense this is gonna be.
Absolutely, and we're, we're ready to, I'm, I'm ready to make those, whatever sacrifice that needs to be made, so...
And so you're coming to us for approval for variances, which we can't grant for our engineers on the Board. Got it? So for tonight, suggestion is we table this, you get the engineer, get these things resolved, come back to us.
Maybe you could meet with your neighbors or when you ask them, that might be a, you could, you could think about...
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. Yeah. Do you mind if I, if my engineer just provides some, uh, brief testimony about the application first?
Yeah, I, I...
It'll be, it'll be brief, just two, two topics. I just wanted to make sure that...
You just want, I mean, you're, you're not gonna change our mind on anything, you know?
Understood, right.
Okay, I mean, if, if that's what you want to do, and it's brief, that's fine, and the other thing, too, is if you would like your architect to speak tonight, so he doesn't have to come back, that's another option, too.
Um, I think, would you, do you want to speak tonight, or does...
Or if, I, maybe, maybe it makes sense that I have to wait.
Mr. Chairman, the architect could speak, but if it's compliant with their...
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think, no, I think everybody's gotta come back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, um, you know, our engineer, um, Mr. Tom Scrabel, would like to just make some pre for more.
You got it.
Um, just, before you do that, any questions of the public for Mr. Wan?
Oh, he's gonna come back and testify.
Were you done with his testimony?
Yes.
Do you expect, do you expect to recall him at another date?
Um, I expect there might be questions from the, the public that he might be able to assist with, so, yeah.
So are you willing, if you come back at another date, are you willing to make Mr. Wan available for questions from the public at that later date?
Of course.
Okay.
But can I just make one point? I know, and everything makes sense, but now you're asking people who maybe can't come back, is it fair to ask people if they want to speak now?
Well, that's what we said, if they wanted to...
Just to make it clear to the people that are here, maybe to...
To share their actual...
Yes.
Factual concern.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Not turn this into a gripe session. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Tom, Thomas Scrabel, S as in Sam, K-R-A-B as in Boy, L-E, business address is 65 Ramapo Valley Road in Maual, New Jersey. Could you take it through your educational background? Sure. I have a bachelor's in civil engineering, the University of Delaware, 1987, um, been practicing in the industry ever since. Got my New Jersey license in 92. It's been in good standing since. Uh, testified before many Boards, Northern New Jersey, Southern New York State. Uh, I've been the municipal engineer in the borough of Old Pan in Burton County, um, since 98 or 9. Um, also represented in one other municipality throughout the years, um...
Have you testified before this Board?
You know, I've been in the building, but it's been a long time, so I don't recognize any faces. It might not have been this Board.
Okay. He appears vulnerable.
Thank you. Mr. Scrabel, you want to speak? Sure, I'll be really brief. I, I understand the Board's position on this. I just wanted to point out two things, which I think are very important, so that you can kind of mull them over before we come back after we meet with your engineer. Um, the two important items are that the existing coverage on the lot is 2,136 square feet. Um, what we're proposing is 1,958 square feet, so we're actually reducing, reducing the coverage on the property. Um, currently, the lot has no stormwater management whatsoever. Um, the driveway runs all the way along the side of the house, discharges toward the back, everything discharges toward the back and/or the sides. Um, none of it is controlled. None of the roof leaders are controlled. Um, what we're proposing to do is we're gonna have a garage under, so the driveway will be collected on-site, and the roof leader, roof leaders will be collected in a seepage pit system in the rear. Uh, we will do, um, soil boring, soil permeability test to make sure that that's gonna function properly. I did take a quick look at, um, soil conservation, um, the NRCS soils, information for the site, and everything looks to be and everything looks to be good. It's all, it's gravelly loam, no groundwater to a depth of 80 inches based on the, the soil study, which I realize we have to confirm. But I think from a stormwater management standpoint, we can make the situation much, much better in, in relatively standard means.
So your testimony is currently, this site will be improved with this new construction you're going to put in from a stormwater management?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen the report from our engineer?
I have.
Okay, and you're confident, based on what he wrote, that that's achievable?
Yeah, it's a matter of how we do it, but we can do it.
John, do you want to add anything here?
Um, no, other than when, you can't control the engineer's schedule, but assuming you can get a meeting with him in a relatively short period of time, how much work do you have to do prior to getting back here?
Don't know yet. I mean, it's a small site, the scope of the work can't be-
You have to have everything on file 10 days ahead of the meeting, so.
Yeah, it's, once we meet and, and agree on a concept, it's going to take me a day or two to-
Would you do a soil test to back up your calculations?
If you want that upfront, we'll, we'll do that upfront.
I would think you'd have to.
Understood.
See you soon.
All right. Yeah. Okay, at this time, I will ask if there's any members of the public who have questions of this witness, based on the testimony he's provided tonight, with the understanding that he will likely be back, provide additional testimony, and then you will have the opportunity to ask questions of that testimony at that night. All right, come on up. You got to come up, have a seat, give your name, speak into the mic, and this is an opportunity to ask questions. Can you, hold on, can you have a seat? Speak into the mic, and first you have to give your name and address.
Robert Kosicki, 18 Marcela Road, right behind 22 Lawrence, down slope. I could not hear the exchange between Mr. Chadwick and the gentleman who just testified. Is there some place that you can make available, just a summary of what he's going to be doing or preparing or giving to the engineer?
Yeah, see, I asked him if he could do the soil test in advance of going to see the engineer so they're not speculating, and he said he would do that.
Okay.
And then he'll sit down with the engineer, make the calculations. His testimony, or his testimony at this point is that he's going to send all the water out the front instead of the back.
The driveway water will be handled out front and the roof leaders will be handled in the sewage pit that are currently shown, is currently shown in the rear, but that's subject to revision if necessary.
That becomes the important issue of the soil test. If the, if reading the old US Department of Agriculture, I think they are-
USDA.
Yeah, yeah. Plans, if they're accurate for this location, it, it should work. If he gets out there, digs his hole, finds out, whoop, it's not the same, then it's going to be a different story, so.
And in terms of, I know that there are obviously other people who would like to comment.
Yeah, but I think at, at this point-
Right.
It would be premature because-
I agree. Because my question was just procedural because I could not hear the exchange between the two of you.
Sorry.
Could I just ask the, the audi, if I'm allowed to, if the audience understands what's going on with the procedures? No? Okay, so do you mind, do you want to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so normally what happens is, is the case will be presented, we'll go through the facts, the lawyers will, the experts will talk, and as we go on, objections will be made, and we'll have inquiries or whatever, and then we'll get to a point where we realize that the engineer, the town engineer, wrote a detailed report showing a lot of concern about the water, which maybe some or all of you will hear about. They initially said that they'll adhere to this, what the requests are, but our expert feels that it's best if the two parties, the, the people who want to build the house and the town, get together and come up with a more concrete plan. So this way, we have all the facts before we can vote on it. So normally, that would be, it would be done in a day or whatever. So what we're doing now is getting some of you on the record so that they could hear what your complaints are and hopefully come up with a solution. So already, you might be worried that the water, you have a water problem, he's building something that's going to get wet worse. They orig, they came on now and they were trying to tell you, they're going to say, is that they're doing something that's actually going to make your problem less. So getting the town involved to say, this is what we need, and you, hearing that they've spoken to the town and they agree with what the town says, might make you sleep a little better and not oppose this if you're here to oppose. So it's a little different today, but it allows you the time now to get something on the record, to come up and say, I am concerned, I live next door, I get a lot of water, and we will carry it, and you will get to come back to the next meeting and be able to ask more questions to more people and to then state your feelings. Is that fair?
Yeah, and you'll have information on what they're proposing to do and how it will address the water runoff issues that you currently have that might not continue once they do the new construction. Now, hey, Mr. Wong, I, I give him credit frankly for coming forth and being willing to do this, and so you'll meet with the engineer and move ahead.
Are some or all of those reports available to us?
Well, that's what I was going to say, nor the engineer's report.
You can file an Oprah request with the clerk's office.
Our engineer's report that we're all referring to is fairly detailed, a number of concerns that probably you have and many others have, okay? And so the applicant is saying, we now just received this thing, so we'll meet with the township engineer and our guys and come back with a plan that addresses his issues from the township engineer's standpoint and possibly most of your issues, okay?
Mr. Chairman, and so people don't have to go through the Oprah process, which I know can be a pain in the neck, we're happy to share our information. We're going to meet with the engineer, we'll describe what revisions we're making, what comments he had, copy everybody involved so that we know discrepancies. We want to work this out, we want to come back also as much as everybody else.
Yep, it, it, it sounds like we are in about as good a place as we can be when we have disputes between an applicant and the neighbors. So they're going to go, they're going to meet with the engineer, and then they're going to come back and hopefully have an agreed-upon plan that satisfies the engineer's concerns, which I do believe, based on his memo, are reflective of the neighbor's concerns. Yeah, is, are you finished?
I'm finished, yes.
Okay.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Mahesh Pragapati, last name is P-R-A-G-A-P-A-T-I.
You guys speak louder and into the microphone.
And spell your first name.
First name, M-A-H-E-S-H, last name is P-R-A-G-A-P-A-T-I. 31 Marcela Road, Parsippany.
I'm sorry, what's the address?
31.
31 Marcela, you said?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You may ask a question.
Yeah, question, question like, question, is it going to be the primary home, whoever is coming in? It's not going to be rental property or selling and all that stuff, like somebody-
So he wants to have his family live there?
Okay, so primary, primary home for at least like-
This is testimony.
Yep.
At least, yeah, okay, good, 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 that's good. Whatever the discussion is going to be, we will get the report or we won't?
Well.
The newer-
I, I don't know how you would get it other than an Oprah report unless you-
Don't you just contact the township engineer?
Yeah. How are you going to get them? Are you, are you taking addresses and-
Put some copies in the mailbox.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, they'll give it, yep.
And, and then we will know the next date?
Tonight. We're going to do that soon.
We're going to do that next.
Okay. And last question is, based on the discussion, I understand the water, that is the main issue, I would say.
Maybe.
Yeah, so after that, the, I guess, this gentleman, after that, the design of the house, is it going to change?
We don't know.
So based on the-
That's another application.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When we, when we reconvene, the engineer in terms of the stormwater, we're going to get through that hurdle, and then the rest of the stuff will just fall in place.
Got it, got it, okay.
They still, still have to show why they need to have the size of the house compared to the property because it's undersized and they're asking for variances. That, that's, that's their burden.
Yeah.
Yes, part of it.
And if they can show that it's consistent with the neighborhood, consistent with what the existing homes in the area show, then they have a good case. If they can't, they don't have a good case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have questions? If you do, come on up. Have a seat, speak into the mic, please state your name and give your address.
Hello, can you hear, okay. My name is Hardik Gandhi, spelled H-A-R-D-I-K, last name Gandhi, G-A-N-D-H-I, 1130 Marcela Road.
30?
30, please do. And just a clarifying question first before I go to my actually-
Speak up a little bit, please. Thank you. I'm alone.
Okay, so, I'll get to the, first, a clarifying question. The variance being asked is on the side of the property, where minimum is six feet, the applicant-
I don't want to talk about that yet.
You're not, you're not right-
If he had done any testimony, he didn't talk about it at all.
Okay.
That would be the next area.
Okay, so that is not a point of discussion today.
It will be, but not tonight.
I see.
Yeah, we really only covered drainage tonight.
Okay.
Based on the very brief presentation he gave.
Okay.
And before you asked it, I, I said more than I should have, it's not number three.
Okay.
You're on the record.
Then maybe I, I need to reserve this for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw a couple other hands, come on up.
Michelle Palumbo, 28 Lawrence Road, north side of 22 Lawrence. I just wanted to ask if grading was part of the drainage discussion, like a regrading, because my understanding is more than 50 yards of incoming dirt is considered regrading, and we're understanding there's many more yards than that coming. I'm on one side. I am afraid now I'm going to be below grade of the new property, so I'm not sure if that's addressed in that engineer's report.
I need a real brief answer, that'll help.
Yep.
We're, we're exporting soil to the foundation. We're, we're digging beyond the limits of the existing building, so dirt will be removed from the site, not brought in.
But after the foundation is in, are we talking about regrading around the foundation? So that is-
Very minimal, I'd have to go to the drawing to give you a better answer.
Sure.
Just curious, I'm on the low side.
Real question.
Do we have to enter another?
Yeah, we're not, we're showing zero fill on the property, so the, the existing grades at the corners of the dwelling will be within inches of what they are now. And I think it'd be fair to say too, based on the application the engineer mentioned here, that clearly there's a water issue now.
Oh, absolutely.
And the proposal will be to alleviate and-
I do not deny that there is, but my concern is, we're, we're kind of level right now across the board, and if there are even a little bit more, you know, we are sitting on clay and there's a real issue with how Parsippany drains in general.
And, and neither the public nor the applicant are denying that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public have a question of, for this witness? Okay, we'll close that portion. All right, you can come on up.
Patricia Vasto, 20 Lawrence Road, Parsippany. I, I'm just curious if there's a hardship need in regards to the building of this house, the size of it.
I don't, I don't think that's for him to answer.
I'm not sure who's supposed to answer, I'm just, you know, stating the question.
Next meeting.
Yep.
That's my question.
Okay, ask it next time.
Okay? Wasn't sure, just wanted to-
Yep, no problem, no problem. All right, anyone else, final call. Okay, we'll close that portion. Guess we're looking at a date now.
Right, is July 24th too soon for you?
No, there's no, I guess.
Otherwise, it's August 7th.
So there's nothing sooner than, that would be the-
No.
No. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, I think we would have to do the next, we said August.
August 7th.
August 7th.
So you're asking that it be adjourned until that date?
I'm, I'm, sorry. August 7th, August 7th would be-
With all necessary extensions?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay.
So the next hearing on this will be August 7th, okay? There will not be any other notice, so write it down in your planbooks, phones, whatever you got to do to remember, and we will see you back here on August 7th in the interim. You will be meeting with the engineer to resolve whatever outstanding water issues there are.
It can be very busy, I'd be reaching out soon.
Yeah.
Start right away.
Oh, yeah.
Like tomorrow.
Yeah.
Be good.
I will start, I will work on it right away. I will also take the public's email addresses if they would like to meet me over here.
Sure, that's great, we appreciate that. All right.
So I don't know if you heard, he'll take your email addresses, so he will-
Well, we, we just close this.
Sorry?
The point being is, any of you who want to have the direct information prior to the next meeting, they are willing to send it to you, if you give me your email address, they will send you the information, okay?
I can do that too. Yeah, it's enough. Yeah. Let me make sure it gets to you, what's your address? Let you go up.
Yeah. I think you guys should go out and give all our information.
I'm not going to say your other address. Maybe you have your address, please. Sure.
Remember that, remember when Harry used to mail everything and we'd get these massive packs?
Okay.
All righty, that leaves us with application 242023, Miller Ale House.
Yeah. Well, I don't want you, we don't, don't want to feel you're being kicked out, but if you were here for the previous case, why don't you go ahead and enjoy your evening and talk outside and leave your addresses, okay, please? Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind just going like down the hallway so we can have our meeting.
And you can meet with those guys, you have all the information.
Thank you, we'll see you in August.
All right, thank you, we'll see you soon.
Welcome, Mr. O'Neill.
Congratulations, Chairman Kaplan.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of Miller's Ale House. This is a application for an additional sign. So right now, Miller's Ale House is approved for three signs, one on each face, one facing forward, and two on the side. Miller's Ale House is looking for a sign identifying the pickup door to go through. That was deemed to be an additional sign. Now, you might think to yourself, this is an internal directional sign, not visible to the street. Should this be an A-appeal, and I know how much this board loves A-appeals, but I decided not to do that because the discretion of the zoning officer in this case is because it contains an illustration specific to Miller's Ale House, it is not an internal directional sign. That has been a long time practice here in town, so we filed this application. Simply put, it is a sign, you have it in front of you, above that door, that door faces the side where the Starbucks is, which is the side preliminarily where everybody's driving in now because the hotel hasn't been constructed yet. And we think it speaks for itself, it's improving site circulation, certainly giving everybody the indication where they need to go to pick up their food, as you are aware, since the pandemic, a lot of people are ordering now to pick up from these restaurants. This is an accommodation for that. It is a channel sign, it's a full-on sign, going to be lit just like the other signs. I do have a representative of the sign company here to answer any questions you may have about the sign. Otherwise, that's the entirety of my application.
Anyone on the board interested in hearing testimony from a sign expert?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Would you like to sum?
I think I already did, and I thank the board for its time.
Did these signs stay on all the, all of them?
Oh, that was a question.
I don't, Nick Kapatis, Sign Pros, I don't believe so. I think they do turn off, but I can't testify exactly. It would be based on the ordinance, there might be a contactor that turns the lights on and off.
I believe this was covered in the original application, but my understanding is the building signs turn off when the restaurant is closed, to show everybody.
Within an hour.
Yeah, to show.
That was the condition, yeah.
Pardon me?
That was the condition.
Yeah.
So we'll just show this one with that.
Yeah, they'll all be there.
So all the conditions of the previous resolution would be-
Everything is completely unchanged from the prior application, except for this additional sign.
I got to say, based on the popularity of the space, I didn't know why they needed another sign, because certainly people are- another sign, because certainly people are getting in there fine, so this is just for the to-go side order.
Yeah, it's that, it's.
I got it, got it.
Curb side pickup, it's got a little speedy.
And how big is, I, I know it's on here, but just for nothing.
Well, why don't we introduce you then?
Raise your right hand, just swear or affirm the.
There you go, David.
Very quick thing, it's not a large sign, one foot eight, the letters are twenty inches high, much smaller.
You're done, thank you.
And that's exhibit A one, thank you.
This goes on the existing line, illuminate with the same electricity for the rest of this.
Thank you.
Hopefully you build by the word.
Any other questions from the board? David, you wanna go into conference?
No.
I'll go to staff on Miller's on the way home.
Um, someone wanna make a statement about the application?
Yes. I'm voting for it.
Was that it?
That's it.
All right, uh, someone wanna frame the resolution? Oh, you're right. Right, remember in the beginning where I said you have to have patience with me, and it's my first night, you know? Do you have any questions? Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and give it a shot with the resolution, since I'm here now, application twenty-four, colon, twenty-three, Miller's Air House, seventeen nineteen Route ten, block two hundred, lot one, zone ROL, recommend a C variance for a wall sign to be permitted.
Second, Willans.
Okay, Nora.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Brinianni. Jaskowicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Willans. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Enjoy.
Great presentation, guys.
It's one of the best. All right, motions are adjourned.
I could go into stormwater.
All right, motions made and seconded, meeting's over.
Not for adjournments, let's use that whole a favor.
Thanks, thirty-five more years, I get a cake.
We have to wait until after I get the resolution.
You know what? Keep changing.
And then I saw the public.
You're just building something to look up to, you're just getting down this quick.
With an A appeal.
It was fantastic, David, that last question.
I would have been the chick who would drive it first.
Email, what I said.
I'll talk to her.